I'm gonna turn it over to Derek and then if you get past the five-minute allowed speaking of Dr. Kuhn, we'll call you out and stop you.
Yeah, no problem. I appreciate that.
You just take as long as you need.
No. Just to everybody and especially board members, Dr. Wheat, Rodney, Cindy, Daryl, Dr. Kuhn, Angie, I don't know where Billy is, he's probably getting a hot cup of coffee or something. But it's just been such a pleasure serving with all of y'all. And, you know, we blinked in four years as passed, but we, a lot occurred in four years and it made me a better person and even more a strong fan of the AISD and what the teachers, the staff, the administrators, everybody involved with this school district has just really stepped up. And I know that everyone will continue to step up and I'm just super proud of the school district and the board and administrators and everybody that's involved with it and just have the highest expectations that things are gonna continue to improve and super excited about being a fan on the sidelines now. I've had a front row seat for four years and I'm excited for Taylor to fill this spot and I know he's gonna do a great job and just things are really looking up for the school district and I was super happy to be a part of it, so thank you very much.
I'm looking to see if there's a glimmer, a tear or anything, 'cause I'm trying not to do that.
Well, I'm not as easily read as Daryl, 'cause there's been a lot of times during the school board meetings where I would make a, ask a question or something and I would see him just turn flush red and I could read him like a book.
I'm like, "I've never turned red, did I?"
But, no, it's, I'm keeping it together. It's been great.
Good job. Congratulations.
You bet.
Well, I also too want to just share my thanks and gratitude for allowing me to serve alongside of you and serving the kids and the community of Abilene the last eight years. Jane Beard and Stan Lambert tapped on my shoulder back in 2015, I guess, and asked me if I'd consider doing this and I'd had been asked before and I look back on it now and I told several of you tonight. It's one of the best things that I've ever done from a volunteer standpoint. Might be the greatest thing I've ever done, just for me. I'm not sure that work ended up being that great, but I know that we made a lot of changes and improvements and we have a lot of work left to do and I know that me stepping out, I'm leaving it in great hands. And so to each one of you, I want to say thank you for the ride. It's been incredible. And, oh, we'll miss this. I found out yesterday that I've got three grandbabies coming in January and December and so I have a feeling I'll find time on Monday nights to be helping in some way. But I've told several of you that I want you to, my challenge and my expectation is that you continue to be the hands and feet of Jesus and that you continue to wash the feet of our kids and our families and serve them. And then, and I know that each and every one of you will. And so, on behalf of myself and my family, thank you and we look forward to watching great things. Dr. Kuhn's gonna do a great job and I want to ask every one of you to give him a chance. I think you've seen what he's capable of since he's joined us in the last two months and I'm looking for really good things coming out of underneath his leadership and you guys responding to his leadership that way. So, we'll get on to our meeting, so thank you. Dr. Kuhn informed me that I get to keep the gavel after, I guess maybe the next meeting there'll be a new gavel up here, so I don't know what I'm gonna do with it, but I'm afraid to think what somebody will do with it with me. So, I would like to call this meeting to order. A quorum is present, the time is 4:33. Notice of this meeting was posted in the time and manner required by law. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Taylor Tidmore, Rodney Goodman, Blair Schrader, and Angie Wiley to step forward in front of the board table to take your oath of office and your spouses and family are welcome to come stand beside you, so, and I would encourage y'all to do that, so, because you have now also become an extended board member. You don't have to take the oath, but you are gonna to be there supporting your dad And at this time, will Robin Jones, will administer the oath of office?
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Blair Schrader.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of School Board Trustee
Of the Office of School Board Trustee.
For the Abilene Independent School District
For the Abilene Independent School District.
Of the State of Texas
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
At this time, I would ask Mr. Goodman, Ms. Wiley to rejoin us here at the board dais and Dr. Tidmore, Mr. Schrader to return to your seats momentarily. And now, we would like to honor our outgoing board members with a presentation, so I'll ask our two outgoing board members to please come stand right down here where they just were and I am gonna get something for you. Um, let's see, Gustavo, will you help me with something up here?
Come on. Do you wanna stand?
Yeah, y'all will stand right down there in the front.
Come on, don't. Thank you. I was wanting to be around and make the motion to elect the president. I don't know if you guys see that. I've gotta tell you about it. This is a little, or both, or anchors, you can either mount it, be sure, on your wall or you can put it on the desk. So, hang on, I gotta find my cheat sheet. Oh, well, that's why I can't find it. It's bagged with. I got it behind you. Or your car. Here we go. So, this was made by our students at the lift and the reason it has a remote control is 'cause it's backlit, so you can hang it on your wall and you can turn it on and it'll light up. It's a plasma cut out of stainless steel, LED backlit, battery operated. The metal was made by the welding department led by Mr. Zach Hagaman and the lighting on the back was done in the maker's space led by Chi Green. So, I think that's a very fitting award for you guys for your service. We appreciate you. And one last time, let's give them
I think we should all picture too.
We'll invite y'all to come sit up, well, let's take some pictures first.
Be great.
I was hoping you wouldn't ask me to hold his.
One, two, three.
I forgot you were one-armed man when I handed that to you.
Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I need to fill out a public response card or anything?
Not much, you got more to say. At this time, I'd like to invite our two new board members to take the open seats at Welcome, gentlemen. And now, before we go on to the next part of our board meeting, I would invite each of you to make some remarks if you would like to. Don't wanna put you on the spot or anything, but as an opportunity to welcome you to the board, the floor is yours. Whoever wants to go first?
I think it's on, you just clip it to your top. Yes, it's on. Well, thank you. It's an honor to be here. It's an honor to represent the people of Abilene, being able to serve in this capacity. There's a long legacy of service and leadership that have come from the people who sit behind this podium and I'm going to honor and do my best to fulfill the work that goes on here because our kids and our teachers and our parents and our communities expect nothing less. I grew up walking to Bonham Elementary. I went to the landmark that's Lincoln Middle School and I went to Grand Ole Abilene High. This is home. And so I'm excited to be able to come back after having spent some time away to call this place home again. I have four kids that are part of this educational environment and I have a wife who's a teacher. And so, the relationship that I have there is unique, it's personal. What we do here matters, not just for the kids, but for the community as a whole. And so, it is a trust that I cherish, is an obligation and a duty that outside of being a father and a husband and a child of God, it's my obligation. And so I'm appreciative of the service and I know that there's a lot of sacrifice and so I look forward to rolling up my sleeves and working alongside of everybody and fulfilling this mission. Thank you.
I feel very honored and humbled to join this group and to be elected to this position. I just wanna say thanks again to Daryl and Derek for your service for the last four and eight years. We have big shoes to fill and so we take that responsibility to heart and so I've had kids in this district the last 14 years. We've had an overwhelmingly positive experience and so my wife and I have been very involved in our kids' schools over the last 14 years and so we just see this as sort of an extension of that involvement and a way to give back to a district that's been really good to us. And so, I wanna make sure that positive experience that we've had continues to be available not just to my kids, but to every kid in the district. And so, I'm excited to serve in this role. I know I've got a lot to learn over the next few years, but I'm excited and honored to be here.
Thank you both and welcome to the Abilene ISD School Board. We look forward to working with you. And now we will move into closed session, which will be held under the provisions of Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, including but not limited to Section 551.071, Section 551.072, Section 551.074, Section 551.076, Section 551.082, and Section 551.0821. Thank you.
6:08, if you have not noticed, we have new clocks up there that are both working and they're red, so we're on time. Okay, sorry, now I'm mic'd up. Alright, the time again was 6:08. We thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to join us tonight. At this time, we would respectfully ask you to turn off the sound of your cell phones. May I remind anyone wishing to address the board that they must have completed a public comment card before the start of the public portion of tonight's meeting, indicating the agenda item or topic about which they wish to speak. As your Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals for the district, listen to reports presented by the superintendent and his designees, approve and review the budget, approve certain personnel appointments and contracts, and make policy for the district. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent. It is the board's responsibility to govern the affairs of the district and ensure that the district is moving forward in meeting the vision and goals that are set on an annual basis. Meeting times for board meetings are posted on the AISD website at www-abileneisd.org. The public is invited to attend. At this time, Mrs. Allison Camp, Executive Director for Student Services, will lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to our flags.
Good evening. Will you pray with me? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for your faithfulness and provision in our lives. We thank you for each person in this meeting and the unique talents and perspectives they bring. We thank you for the opportunity we have to serve the students and families of AISD. Give us insight to lead with integrity and help us to always seek your will in all that we do and say. Continue to bless us as we work to prepare for the next school year. In your name we pray, amen. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And for the Texas flag, pledge? Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We will now move to item C, which is Board and Superintendent Announcements. Dr. Kuhn?
I only have a couple of announcements tonight. One is that you may have seen that star scores are in for schools across the state of Texas and I'll remind everybody, star scores are useful as a diagnostic for school districts. They are not the be-all and end-all of our schools, but they are important for us to see how we're doing. I'm very happy to recognize a few of our campuses that recently, you may have seen on Facebook, received what we're calling triple star awards for gains and improvement that they've seen on their campus. The other thing I want to remind the board is we will be scheduling a special meeting for recommendation for higher, for principal of the Ortiz campus and that will be coming up soon. Those are my only two announcements.
Does anyone else have an announcement that they would like to make? Okay. At this time, we will move to item five, Organization of Board of Trustees, the election of officers. This was discussed in closed session by the members of the board, so we will move forward. Is there a motion regarding the officers for the Abilene ISD Board of Trustees?
I make a motion that the officers for the Abilene ISD Board of Trustees are as follows. President Angie Wiley, Vice President Rodney Goodman, Secretary Cindy Earls, Assistant Secretary Bill Enricus.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Blair, I don't regret.
Schrader.
He's always called him Blair in class.
I called her Mrs. Earls.
Mrs. Blair.
At least, that's why I called her herself.
By Blair Schrader. And do we have a second?
Sure.
Dr. Wheat has given our second. Okay, we will take a roll call vote. Danny Wheat?
Yes.
Taylor Tidmore?
Yes.
Rodney Goodman?
Yes.
Blair Schrader?
Yes.
Angie Wiley?
Yes.
Cindy Earls? Yes. Bill Enricus?
Yes.
Okay. The motion passes seven to zero for a new slate of officers. And since our name tags are either non-existent or scrambled, mine's right here.
We've got new ones.
Yeah. I just didn't know that either.
Okay, so do we want to?
We're gonna shuffle just a little bit?
Are we gonna shuffle a little bit?
We'll have the new president sit right here and then beyond that, I think everything can just go wherever everyone's comfortable.
I'll swap places with her.
We did, we talked about it.
Okay.
Okay. Take your name tag.
And here are you. You go over there, okay. We discussed it, obviously not thoroughly though. Thank you for your patience when I was the one with the hammer. Otherwise called a gavel. Here you go.
There we go. That's yours.
Wait a minute. Yeah.
Appreciate a little bit of patience, a little bit of nerves. Thank you. Is this your phone, Blair? It is a pleasure to be sitting here. I'm missing my friend Daryl. I promised, we promised when we took this job together that we'd ride out together, but it didn't happen that way, so I'm missing him greatly. But I am proud to be here. This is a team of eight that's gonna grow together. We've accomplished a lot. This team will accomplish a lot and I'm very proud to be sitting here, serving the students of AISD, serving the teachers of AISD and serving the people of AISD. So, let's get going. Let's keep going. We're gonna move past the A, no, the B. Okay. We'll now move on to item five, six, recognitions. Our UIL State Academic Honorees were not able to join with us tonight, so we're gonna recognize them at a later time. And same goes for the athletic state competitors. These are busy kids, they could not be with us tonight, so we're gonna recognize them at a time that's better for them. So, moving on, Master Sergeant, US Air Force Retired Ron Deos, Aerospace Science Instructor and Drill Team Coach at Cooper High School. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. Honored to be here with the board tonight and I'd like to bring up four of our cadets from, from the AISD Junior RTC Program, JV, Trevor, Josh, and Arianna. Please come forward. These four young cadets, JV from Cooper and Trevor and Josh from Abilene High and Arianna, in the Abilene High program but an Adams student, were all selected as recipients of the first ever, the inaugural program of the Staff Sergeant Jeremy D. Smith Exemplary Service Award, award created and sponsored by a group called the Concerned Veterans for America and the Concerned Veterans for America Foundation. This grassroots effort to recognize junior RTC cadets started with our chapter right here in Abilene, Texas. As a reward for their service in their community and in their schools and their academic performance, their leadership and their potential, the CVA invited these four cadets along with their instructors, myself and Colonel Davidson from Abilene High, who's not able to be with us tonight 'cause he's on his way to an Alaskan cruise. So, he started his summer. They offered to and provided for us an all expenses paid trip to Washington DC for four days for a recognition ceremony for tours of the Air Force Memorial, the Pentagon, Smithsonian, Smithsonian museums. We got to go by the White House, we toured, got to see all the monuments, so it's a wonderful opportunity. I'd like to ask Candace and Angela, who are here representing CVA, to come forward as well. We cannot express our, we cannot express in a worthy manner our gratitude for everything that CVA has done for these four cadets. We recognize their, their worth and their value within our programs, within our schools, within our school district, but for a veterans organization to, to see that as well and to decide, and Ms. Candace here was, was, she is the spearhead, unsung hero, actually, we tried to sing her praises even more and every time she just, she just deflects, but the CVA national folks in Washington welcomed them in and had an award ceremony as you see in the picture. We literally, I don't know if the kids said this, but the instructor said, "We had to tell them, 'Stop feeding us.'" Because they, they just glamour meal after glamour meal all over, all over Washington DC and it's a great experience for our children. And they are looking to expand this program nationwide in the future and these cadets in Abilene ISD will forever be known as the inaugural winners of the Staff Sergeant Jeremy Smith Exemplary Service Award. And the best thing that they told us, they told us several times and as we returned home, they told us, "You cadets, your, and your instructors are invited back to this award ceremony at no expense in perpetuity."
Wow.
Forever. So, many thanks to the CVA and congratulations to our cadets.
I think we'd like to ask y'all to pose for a picture here. If you'd come and stand in front of the board dais right up here. Y'all come on up. Congratulations, you guys. Very proud of you guys. Well done.
Congratulations. That is thrilling. So, did you learn how to ease all the right, forth and all the right? Thank you for those opportunities. Ron, thank you. Congratulations. How did you put up those forty steps? Okay, that's so nice.
We, we, we are right there. Okay, folks, nice, nice smiles on three. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Now, stay there, don't move.
Yeah, alright. One, two, three. Oh, sorry ma'am. Thank you.
Congratulations, you guys.
Now, I'd like to call on Ms. Kimberly Brumley, our Executive Director for Federal Programs and District Planning. Kimberly, welcome.
Good evening, Mrs. Wiley, Dr. Kuhn, Trustees. It's great to be with you again this evening. Last Thursday night, I presented to you our annual update on the Teacher Incentive Allotment Program outlining our processes and our celebrations across the year. Tonight, we get to celebrate the designation of a number of our teachers and all of the good that they are doing here in Abilene ISD. This year, we are proud to announce that we have 58 Teacher Incentive Allotment Designees in Abilene ISD, 29 of them being first timers, meaning this is the first time that they have qualified for a designation. 22 of our teachers out of that 58 are continuing at the same level and we have seven that have climbed to a new level of designation over the last 12 months. Our total award to the district is over $760,000 this year and you'll see average payouts to, to teachers at each level as we go through the slides of honorees. I want to give a special shout-out tonight. We have members of the administration teams at three of our participating campuses. From Alcorta, we have Michelle Joslett. From Bonham, we have Kevin Wellborn and from Stafford, we have Christina Dooley. While we're gonna name a bunch of their teachers and celebrate them, know that a big part of TIA is the additional work that each of our administrators does to ensure that every eligible teacher has an annual formal observation and robust feedback across the entire school year. So, at these campuses, there are very few people who get to waive an annual observation and that means our administrators do a whole lot of work along the way. So, let's move on to the celebrations. Our first level of designation is the recognized level. We have a great list of teachers who are celebrating being first-time recipients of designations on this list. With us tonight, we have Allison Wellborn and Kimberly Holmes Abrams. With us tonight, we have Allison Wellborn and Kimberly Holmes Abrams. So, I'm going to ask you guys to come up. We can clap for them as they come. Allison is a teacher at Clack Middle School, focusing on reading language arts. And Kimberly Holmes Abrams teaches at Ortiz Elementary in second grade. Now, typically, what we do is we take a picture with each level, because it'll be a really big group if we get to all three. So, recognized teachers, I ask you to go up here. You get to have your picture made. And my next group's going to get ready. Administrator's family, come up here in the middle. I'm going to step back.
Thank you for the hard work.
Alright, folks. Nice smiles on three. One, two, three. And one more time. One, two, three. Don't move.
One, two. Whoop, well, I shot sooner than I, my countdown. Good thing y'all are ready. Thank you.
The next group of staff we'll recognize is a really long list. We have a number of teachers who have joined the ranks of our TIA designees at the exemplary level. And you'll see from this list, there are four staff members at the bottom whose names have an asterisk next to them. This means that they were previously designated, and over the last twelve months, they have moved up a level from recognized to exemplary. With us tonight in this group, we have Kevin Wright from Bonham Elementary, Callie Pringle from Alcorta Elementary, Cheryl Steck from Ortiz Elementary, Kelsey Lee from Alcorta, and Jane Voss from Ortiz.
Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations, Katie.
Alright, nice smiles, y'all. On three. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Stay there.
Would you guys mind scooting over just a little bit in the front? Thank you. Miss center y'all a little bit. One, two, three. Thank you.
The last group we'll recognize tonight are the teachers who are at the master level. This is the highest level of designation. And what is really interesting to note here, no slight to the three people who have the star by their name, meaning they moved up from recognized or exemplary, but look at the list of people who have joined the system at the masters level. We are excited about that, because these teachers were gathering data the year before and may not have met the criteria to be designated. And in a year's time, they tweaked their performance and their teacher behavior so that their students qualified, and they qualified in this round of data gathering. So, really excited for these group of people. With us tonight, at the master level, we have Eden Dos from Clack Middle School, April Brandon from Stafford Elementary, Erin May from Stafford Elementary, Madison Bangert from Thomas Elementary, Rosanna Day from Thomas Elementary, Wendy Morgan from Thomas Elementary, Alyssa Anderson from Alcorta Elementary, and Abby Cummins from Alcorta Elementary.
Now, we have everyone. Okay, on, on three, y'all. One, two, three. And one more time. One, two, three. Thank you, don't move.
One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations.
Let's hear it one more time for our recognized exemplary and master teacher. Fantastic accomplishment. Proud of all of you.
Thank you, Board.
Such a great time to be here with you guys. Thank you so much for the hard work. Now, go enjoy your summer.
They've earned it.
They have. We'll now move on to item seven, oral communication from the public. The Board encourages comments about the district from members of the public. Anyone wishing to address the Board must have completed a public comment card before the start of the public portion of tonight's meeting, indicating the agenda item or the topic about which they wish to speak. Oral communication from the public is governed by AIST policy BED local. And under the Texas Open Meetings Act, the Board is not permitted to discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on the agenda for the meeting. A speaker will be given up to five minutes to adjust the Board. And if, however, the total number of speakers seeking to adjust the Board at a meeting exceeds five, the per-speaker time limit may be reduced. In no event will a speaker be given less than one minute to adjust the Board. Tonight, we have five, five speakers. So, we will be adjusting the time limit to five minutes. Nobody, everyone will be given five minutes apiece. Dr. Kuhn will monitor the time and make the speaker aware of what time is up. I believe there's a timer at the podium. Okay. Mindy Morris, you're first. Thank you for being here.
Twenty-one years ago, I was encouraged to apply as a truant officer for the school district. And Dr. David Paulnick said yes. And I was so very thankful for that. Said, "You don't have a female attendance officer." I said, "Look, you get two for one. I'll be your photographer for Board meetings and do the trueness." Well, twenty years is long enough. And I didn't know if I would make it tonight. I hurt my foot a few weeks ago and had surgery. But I wanted to say thank you. It's been awesome to get to know y'all. Some of y'all I know better than others, because I ran with you. But Dr. Tidmore and Dr. Snyder, or Mr. Snyder, welcome to the Board. Mrs. Wiley, welcome to the presidency. But not to say I won't ever come back, but the monthly, since we now have someone in communications that is here with the camera, I'm bowing down and just saying thank you. So, y'all have a great evening, and we're here for the kids, no matter what it is.
Well, thank you for your faithful. Thank you so much, Mindy. You have served very well. Next, Mr. Anthony Williams, please join us at the podium. Good to have you. Thank you for being here.
Well, glad to be here this evening and to you. President of Board, Wiley, Dr. Kuhn, and all of you who serve, thank you for this opportunity. Congratulations, Blair Schrader and Dr. Taylor Tidmore for your service. Had a chance to talk to both Daryl and my Abilene High classmate Derrick Hood. Actually, he's eighty-six and I'm eighty-seven, but he's older than I am. But I'm just so thankful for you who raise your hand and serve. A few weeks ago, we came before you, asking us to have an opportunity to look at Woodson Elementary and to see if we'd come up with a plan. And so, we've had three very productive meetings. Individual with me today. We had some very good conversations. And we're asking you if you would consider tableing conversations about selling Woodson and donating Woodson back to the community. If we can bring forth to you a plan you think is suitable. For a lot of different reasons, Woodson means an awful lot to the community. I didn't attend Woodson, but my father was one of the last graduating classes that attended Woodson. And meaning behind me, that school means something to them. And so, we would ask you if you would allow us, just a few months, to gather both a business plan, a use plan to present to you. And if you think that it is worthwhile and befitting, we'd love an opportunity to donate that community so we can continue to use that space for ways to bless this community. So, thank you for your time and your services, community.
Thank you. Derrick Hood. Just could not get enough of us, could you? It's good to have you here.
Yeah, thank you.
Even on that side of the podium, even.
You bet. So, earlier, first of all, thank you, President Wiley. We didn't get a chance to give a round of applause to our new Board President and Officer. Congratulations. I know you'll do a great job. So, first of all, it wasn't that long ago that I was sitting where y'all were. There's my joke for the day. But you've got an item on the agenda that you could act on, and it's related to the Shotwell Annex, which is a very generic term that describes the athletic facilities that are built outside of Shotwell Stadium. It's the track and field facilities where our school district hosts the district. We just finished hosting the, successfully hosting the district track meet there. It's a great athletic facility, but it's called the Shotwell Annex. And we've had a track and field coach in the AIST. He passed away about ten years ago, Coach John McCabe, and taught in the school district for twenty-three, twenty-four years. You ask anybody that remembers Coach McCabe, and a smile comes on their face. He was, he was an exemplary teacher, mentor, coach. And all of the materials that I'd previously given y'all, no one ever mentions, you know, his coaching record, or how many district championships he won, or how many kids qualified for state. It was all about how he impacted them at the personal level, and how much of an encourager he was. And not just to students, but to the staff as well, and to parents. I mean, he was a parent to many of the kids and role model. And so, I just want to assure you that if you act on that and approve it, that the naming of the Shotwell Annex after Coach John McCabe would, is zero risk involved. He was an exemplary person, and even if you go to Abilene High today, there's where they built the, I'm not sure what that wing is called, the Bryant Wing, I believe. You know, there's a quote of Coach McCabe there, and he was involved with that time capsule there. And it's a great day to be an Eagle. I mean, he just, he wore that. Any kid he saw walking down the hallway with his head down, or maybe not making eye contact with anybody, he would catch their eye and find a way to light a spark in them. And it didn't matter who they were. And so, he meant the world to me. This timer isn't going, so just kind of give me a heads up. But he meant the world to me and a million other people here in Abilene and the big country. And you can talk to anybody from the big country, and you mentioned Coach John McCabe. And they just, they just light up, because he was, he was a special man. And his family would be honored, and anybody that he touched would be honored to have that facility represent his name. So, it'll be super positive. And years ago, we used to have the track meet, for some reason, between different athletic directors. It fell off there. It was the big country, or John McCabe Big Country Relays. And at some point, it just kind of disappeared. And we need to make something final. And the only cost is putting some lettering on the existing sign out there. So, I'm just telling you that his family and many others would love to be there at a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and everybody would be super excited and honored to have that facility named after Coach McCabe. Alright, I'll stop. But I'm just super excited for this Board moving forward and the exciting challenges y'all are going to have coming ahead. And this is a no-brainer, okay? Alright, y'all take care. Thank you.
Mr. Hood. Next, please, Jenny Miller. Welcome, Jenny.
Thank you. I'm Jenny Miller, and I would like to thank the Board and President Angela Wiley for the opportunity to tell you a little bit about my friend, John McCabe. From the very first time we met, there was a connection. We had both been raised in a small town. If you've ever come from a small town, believe it or not, the stories are true. And so, we had that connect. We loved sports. We loved teaching. I never met a man that had so much to give, but never wanted to be in the limelight. If he were standing right here, he would not have wanted this honor to go in his name. He always believed that there was someone more worthy. As a man, as a friend, you couldn't find anyone else. I wish everyone in this room had known John McCabe, because once you were a friend of Coach McCabe, you were a friend for life. Positive, funny. Because I was from a small school, I was nicknamed the Queen of Twinkle City. That's a story that we'll talk about in private at some time. But as far as a coach, he never gave up on a child. He believed in every child. And he would always say, as a teacher, it didn't matter what kind of student he taught, because he was going to make sure, dead gummit, they learned something before they left his classroom. As a man, he was a wonderful father, devoted to his wife, his children. He was so incredibly proud of Abilene, of his children. There are not words to describe a man and what he has done for me. At my lowest point, John was there to pick me up. He was there to celebrate me. He would come and watch my girls participate as well as in sports, even though we had a slew of people. When I attended the service for John McCabe, you would not have seen, you could not imagine the people that were there, and how we had stories, funny stories. He had short phrases, quips, that were hilarious. We should have made a book. We would have been all rich by now. We called them McCabeisms. But I just want to thank the Board, as just like Mr. Hood had said, this is a no-brainer. This man is known throughout Texas. I kid you not, somebody's going to know him. And thank you so much for considering this man. He would not have wanted a award like this. So, that's the reason you guys need to make the right decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jenny. Tammy Fogel. Welcome, Tammy. Thank you for being here.
Most people have notes to remember what to say. I have notes, so I won't say too much. So, I'm not going to take my full five minutes, but I just want to let you know, my name's Sammy Fogel, and I'm a resident taxpayer here in Abilene. And I wanted to express my thanks for all your service that you do as Board members, and how you bless our community through your willingness to volunteer. I also wanted to congratulate to those of you who have been newly appointed to the Board and those who are returning to service again another term. I'm actually in the process of forming a Moms for Liberty group here in Abilene, or Taylor County. Our main goal is to help educate school Board members on relevant issues, and also to be a source of information on research. And research on those issues, you might need the information to know on how to be the best in the school district. We are a parental rights advocate group. We love to research and support Board members by providing research to help our county. Moms for Liberty groups also like to make sure you have a good feel for how parents in the community are feeling. And I'm really exciting, excited to be serving alongside you as you do your work to be a part of improving the quality of education here in Abilene. And so, I hope to form a great partnership for good things to come, because I know we're all working together to make sure our kids get the best out of the school system that they can. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you so much. That completes our group, our public comment. Thank you. Our public comment for tonight, thanks again for coming. We greatly appreciate that time from our public and for taking the time to coming to be with us. We'll be here next month. Hope you can come join us.
Thank you all for attending.
We'll now move on to item eight, the Consent Agenda. The AIST Board of Trustees meetings are preceded by an in-depth Board Workshop. Board Workshops are held prior to regular meetings, and the purpose of the workshop meeting of the Board is to discuss items in preparation for potential consideration at future Board meetings. Meeting times for Board meetings are posted on the AIST website at www-abileneisd.org. The public is invited to attend. Does a member need, wish to remove an item for discussion from the consent agenda? Does a member need, wish to remove an item for discussion from the consent agenda? There being none, do I have a motion regarding the consent agenda as presented?
So, move.
We have a motion by Rodney Goodman.
Seconded.
Seconded by Billy Enriquez. We will now take a roll call vote. Bill Enriquez.
Yes.
Blair Schrader.
Yes.
Rodney Goodman.
Yes.
Angie Wiley, yes. Cindy Earls.
Yes.
Taylor Tidmore.
Yes.
Danny Wheat.
Yes.
Motion passes. Seven, zero. Move to approve the consent agenda as.
Oh, that was the motion.
That was it. Okay. Now, we're ready for something else. Okay, I could skip that, too. We will now move on to item number nine. I'm gonna tell you that the Roman numerals are throwing me just a little bit. Item nine, reports. Item A is Fine Arts Department. Mr. Clay Johnson, Executive Director of Fine Arts.
Good evening, Dr. Kuhn, members of the board. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to give you the Fine Arts report for the 2023-24 school year. As you're about to see and hear, we've had a very incredible year in Fine Arts, and so, we are so proud of our teachers, our staff, and of course, all of the students that have accomplished all of these items. Abilene ISD has 81% of students enrolled in Fine Arts courses during this past school year. We have over 100 teachers, administrators, teachers aides, private lesson instructors, temp employees, and piano captains that serve our students in AISD. One of my goals here at the beginning of my job in this, or my role in this new job, I'm having a hard time putting words in order tonight, is to meet with all of our full-time certified employees. And so, I have met one-on-one with most of those employees, just talking about their vision and goals for not only themselves, but their programs and their classrooms. And so, I will continue that this fall, and I will say that we've got some amazing people that work for our district. Approximately 20% of our Fine Arts teachers hold an advanced degree. The Abilene ISD Fine Arts Department was recently recognized as a Best Community in Music Education by the NAM Foundation for this current school year. And we also have been given the District of Distinction Award by the Texas Art Educators' Association for the last three years, and we currently have an application in for this current school year. So, we should hear about that sometime later this summer. Moving on, we have another award that we're applying for. This is for the Award of Distinction, or Award of Distinction District for our theater programs. This is very similar to the Music and to the Art Award that's been given for the last several years. And so, we feel like we're doing fantastic things in our theater departments as well, and so, we're going to aim for that distinction as well. Speaking of, we have 16 high school theater students that qualified for the National Thesbian Festival in speech debate. We had four students this year selected for state-level competition. Eight high school art students entered artwork into the state-based competition, where four received a Division Four rating, which is the highest rating. In music, that's one of the worst ratings, but in art, that's one of the highest ratings. So, very proud of those students. And we had 285 students in band choir and orchestra audition and selected to one of the all-region groups, and that is grade six through 12. We had 511 band choir and orchestra students earn a First Division rating at the solo and ensemble competitions. Again, that is grade six through 12 as well. We had 33 out of 45 music ensembles earn Sweepstakes Trophy at this year's UIL evaluation. And that number of groups competing increased by seven ensembles this year, which is huge. There's a new eligibility rule that went into play that has helped some of our lower-level ensembles have the chance to compete. And the overall number of Sweepstakes awarded was an increase from last year, so we're very happy with that progress. We had three band students and one choir student earn a spot in the TMA All-State Music Ensembles. Abilene High student Holly Nolan had worked selected very recently to be on display at the Governor's Gallery, which will be on display in their business office for this next school year. And we have a reception later this week at the Governor's Mansion where she'll be recognized. So, that's quite an honor. And of course, Abilene ISD Fine Arts organizations were represented in the Abilene community at over 200 unique public concerts, programs, parades, plays, art shows, competitions, and athletic events. And I know that you all are at many of those. We see you there, so thank you so much for your support in all that we do. Do you have any questions?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. I've been blown away by the Fine Arts program in Abilene ISD, and also, the Fine Arts in this community, just coming in as an outsider moving to Abilene. But I, I do believe that the Fine Arts is flourishing in Abilene in no small part because the Fine Arts is flourishing in Abilene ISD. And so, I commend you and all of those 100-plus people that you mentioned earlier. I appreciate all you do to give our kids the ability to shine with their talents and skills that they're developing in those programs. So, thank you and thank them.
I agree.
Thank you so much. That means a lot. Thank you. Have a great evening.
We'll now hear a report on our Athletics Department. Dr., I mean, Mr. Jim Garfield, Executive Director of Athletics. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Good evening. Congratulations.
Thank you.
President Wiley, Dr. Kuhn, board members, welcome aboard. It's gonna be a fun ride. So, we're gonna talk about athletics, my favorite subject. All right, so here's our Athletic Department. My, I'm the executive. Lou Moore is gonna be taking over for Del Van. We have a Facilities Manager and an Intermurals position open. You know, Bobby Black and Mike Routen both have retired for like the 14th time. Belinda is our Administrative Assistant, and Annette Frank was in charge of our Sports Medicine. On our campuses, we made a change at the Girls Coordinator. Jenna Bain's gonna be the Girls Coordinator at, at Abilene High. And then, Jordan Childress is gonna be our new Girls Coordinator at Craig Middle School. We still have an open spot in our Girls Coordinator at Cooper High School with Stacy Harin retiring. So, our alignment this year in Division One football, we're basically gonna stay the same district. We're just losing Lubbock, Cooper, and gaining Lubbock High. Division Twos, we're gaining actually two Wichita Falls schools, since they've closed three of them. Legacy Memorial coming in, and then Lubbock Cooper's coming over. Our All-Sport, so this is everything except for swim and dive. Abilene and Cooper will be with Wiley. Legacy Memorial for the All-Sport, and then that's our swim and dive district. That hasn't changed. Our, the sports that we offer, again, football, volleyball, basketball, soccer, baseball, softball, team tennis, and then on the individual side, cross-country, golf, swim and dive, tennis, track and field, gymnastics, powerlifting, and esports. The only thing that we don't offer at the middle school level is the esports. All right, we have sixth grade pre-ath for the new board members. Last year, we, we brought in a, we wanted our kids to start getting ready for athletics, so we brought in, they had to get a physical to get into the pre-ath, and that's really, really helped us out. We're also teaching them about no pass, no play with our, through our Intermurals program that we run through the sixth grade. They play on the campus against each other, and how do I go back? The other button. Back button, okay? So, they, they compete against each other. Now, if they're not passing, we don't let them play on those Monday nights. So, we play, we have flag football, we have basketball, we have volleyball, we have track and field meet. So, getting them adjusted to go into the seventh grade. What our pre-ath schedule looks like, we go by segments. I did it again.
The back button.
The back button. Okay, we go by segments, so we'll start out with football, volleyball. If you look through there, we'll always be working on our strength and conditioning, all right? Have the basketball come in in November, January. We'll go to track and field, bring soccer in in March, and then we go back. Since football and volleyball starts us off for the, for the school year, we'll bring that back in and start working it in to get ready for seventh grade. Our, our city champions for middle school, you can see that we've had some really good success on both sides, north and south. What we qualified in in the playoffs, you can, we had a successful year, to say the least, to say the least. So, I was really nervous when I got up here last time to do this. I'm not so nervous, Dr. Wheat. You guys make me feel better. Of course, Abilene football won the district championship. We had teams advance and win in the bi-district football, soccer, baseball, softball, team tennis. We had people advance into the, win the area championship in football, baseball, and softball. And then, we had people advance and won in the third round in football and softball. And of course, we had a, a district champion in cross-country at Abilene High. And these were all the qualifiers that we had in our individual sports. Really proud of, of our coaches and our kids and what they've done so far. Our state qualifiers, these are the people that we're gonna talk about next year, next week, but we already had Villa, Via, and the Murray and Van girls show up to our last board. They qualified for the cross-country. Track and field, we had a silver medalist in Jaslyn Hatcher. She'll be here next, next month, I believe. And then, our four-by-one, Abilene High qualified. Now, you know, track and field is a big event in the state of Texas, and if you make it to the state track meet, you've done something special. Gymnastics, Tristan Reyna was a state champion in the Pommel. Corbin Jackson played sixth, played sixth in the Pommel, and Aaron Grohl was seventh in the vault. They're right now competing at Nationals in California. Our participation numbers in green, this is what we had this year, 1,454 at the high school level, 1,257 at the middle school, and then I included the, the 1905. That's included in the sixth grade pre-ath. So, we have, our numbers are, are very strong at, from six through 12. And the reason why I included that number in there is for this slide right here. You know, we're all about the, the academic piece of it, right? Last year, we had an 88.45% pass rate of all of our athletes through five, six weeks. I included the sixth grade pre-ath this year, 'cause what we, the standard that we put on them, if you don't get the, if you don't pass, you don't get to play. And we still had an 88.36 pass, which is amazing. When you bring in the sixth grade, 'cause you know how that could be sometimes. No sixth graders here, right? So, we're really proud of that. Our, our coaches take pride in making sure that our kids are doing what they're supposed to be doing in the classroom. Our superlatives, we had nine superlatives. We had 63 first-team all-district, 42 second-team, 36 honorable mention. We had six all-state. We had 83 academic all-district. This is gonna change with the new district that we got into, 'cause some of the, in the district minutes, some schools didn't have an academic all-district. We've incorporated all the teams into an academic all-district. We had 81 academic all-state, and we had 40, we had, to date, we have 43 kids that are going on to participate in college in athletics. Some of our honors from our coaches, Coach Fulham was the District Coach of the Year. Coach Harmon sits on, he's the second Vice President for the Baseball Association. He's, I believe, his next move is to President of that association. Coach Bain, Coach Williams are rock mentors. Van Heus was a 30-under-30. Justin Reese, part of some elite committees. Coach Cook, he's heading up that national champion team that's in California today. And then, Rosemary's on the super elite for trap. Coach Roan is on the Texas High School Board of Directors. He's also won the Texas Unsun Coaching Hero Award this year. Coach Bacon, our basketball coach at, at Cooper on the boy side, is on the committee for the THSCA. And then, he also was identified as a top 20-under-40 through the city of Abilene. Coach Hudson is a rock mentor, also on the TGCA Committee for basketball. Coach sharing for softball. Coach Campbell for volleyball. Coach Cook, again, heading it up. What this says is that people throughout the state recognize the leadership of our coaches, and they put them on these committees. And that's a very good thing for us. All right, so our professional development, I just got back from our Athletic Directors' Association Convention, which is always good. We hosted a clinic on June 7th, this past Friday, here, the TGCA Satellite Clinic, and we had 90 people show up, and we had 257. We had six of our coaches presenting lectures at that clinic. The next big thing we got coming up is coaching school for TGCA in the Texas High School, and then our All-Coaches Summit on July 26th. Things that we're gonna do in the fall. Last year, we talked about the seat at the table in the Head Coaches Academy. We did that. I'm gonna add salt. We're gonna, Student Athletic Leadership Team, and I'm gonna pick some kids and make a leadership team out of our office. They do it on campus. I just want to bring it to a different level. Okay, seat at the table. It's our, it was for, it's for our female coaches, and it's, it's a chance for our female coaches to get together to talk about things that come up, you know, like when you're having babies, and how you handle practices, and do things like that. And it's a really good initiative that the High School Association. This is a couple pictures of our coaches there. If you look in the top left, we also got the two principals there, Ms. Williamson and Ms. Seibler there. I mean, that says a lot about what our leadership on campus feels about our, our female coaches. Our Head Coaches Academy, we did this. We had 18 assistants participate in this, this last spring. We ran three sessions, and basically, it's kind of was how it set up. So, you wanna be a head coach, you really wanna be a head coach. Then, we went through review resumes and interviews, and then, when you got the job, what do you do now? So, the reason why we did this is we wanna grow our own. If we got coaches that are leaving head coaching spots here, we wanna look in-house first to see if we can move somebody up, right? But we also wanna give our coaches the opportunity to go get a head job somewhere, and we wanna develop them to be, to be ready for that position. This is some pictures from the academy. It was a really neat deal. We have Agiri, Dipworth, Voss, and Williams have been through the Rock Program. Our new ones are Jimenez, Pierce, Coke, and Pearson. They're going through the Rock Program, and this is that mentor program through the Texas High School Coach Association. We have to see that amount and number of coaches that are going through this program, where people have identified, they have to apply, and then they have to be selected to go through this program, through the association. And having that, that amount of people up there says a lot about the young coaches that we have coming up through the system. Some pictures, and then our one-town, one-family, so. How'd I do? Right on. Appreciate you guys. Is there any questions, comments?
I gotta comment.
Okay.
Sometimes when you work with somebody, often you sometimes think that you can take that for granted, because you get so used to what you see and what you experience. And I'm coming in from outside with, with outside eyes, and I gotta tell you, he spent a lot of time praising a bunch of coaches. He didn't praise himself at all, so I'm gonna do that, because this man is known around the state, among athletic directors, among coaches around the state. And when my athletic director, my last school, found out that I was coming to Abilene, he said, "You will love Coach Garfield." And he's right, I've been blown away by, this, this man is a leader who creates leaders, and you saw that in the number of coaches he's got under him stepping up and growing into those roles. And so, he, he takes what he knows, he takes what he is, and he trains, and he passes that on to other people. Abilene Sports is in fantastic shape, Abilene Athletics, not only because of this man, because he's got a big, great team around him, but you could not have a better Executive Director of Athletics than what you have in Abilene. I just feel lucky to get to work with you, Coach, and get to know you.
Yes, thank you. And I'm happy to know what OTOF means, 'cause I've been not wanting to ask.
One-town, one-family. You know, when we, when it's north and south, we'll play hard against each other.
I agree 100%.
But when we're not, we're all about being the family, so.
That's great.
Yep.
And yes, I 100% agree. We, we have that north-town, south-town opportunity to cause rifts, but you, it's our job to keep it from happening, and you do a great job.
Yep.
Thank you for calling, coaches and kids.
This might be an administration question. Where are we on golf?
Danny, you wanna put your mic on?
Where are we on golf?
And sure would like to see wrestling and hockey.
Okay, so golf, you know, we had, we started middle school golf, right? We competed, we had, we got them in five tournaments this year, and they did very well. So, we're growing our program. Everything is going well. As far as wrestling, it really comes down, this really comes down to, we do not have a wrestling chapter in, near the area, as far as officiating, 'cause you'd have to bring them out of the Metroplex or out of Amarillo to come call matches at our place. So, when you look at it from a money standpoint, we need to get a chapter of wrestling officials here or close by here, so that we could have a conversation about starting wrestling, 'cause I would love it. It's one of the best things, being a part of it. I wrestled in high school and coached it, and been part of it in my previous school district. It is, the, the participation numbers would definitely rise. So, working on it, Dr. Wheat, working on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Coach.
We will now move to business items requiring board action. Item A, Board Policy, CV Local Update. Dr. Joe Waldrin, Deputy Superintendent, welcome to the podium.
Thank you, Ms. President, Dr. Kuhn, and members of the board. I'll be here for three items, if anybody's counting. CV Local is unchanged from the last time I presented it to you in the workshop, but I'll go through it pretty quick. Actually, I'm gonna just jump to the comparison slide, oops, right here. So our current board policy, this, this is a local policy completely under the governing of this board. You can choose to make this board policy what you like. What was approved prior in the spring was a policy that doesn't quite line up with the Texas government code, and that's why we're here today voting on it. So what you see on the right is what's in your board packet, which authorizes the superintendent, which is directly in line with Government Code twenty-two-sixty-nine, to select the best procurement method for a construction project over fifty thousand dollars. The board still holds the, the authority and the power to approve a contract for construction over fifty thousand dollars, but determining the construction method, which there are a few, that gives the district the best value, is, in this version of the policy, delegated to the superintendent. The other two things in the policy that were changed align with our practice. And I believe it's been alluded to in conversations, the coming back to board meetings at different times to, during construction. In general, the superintendent approves a change order to a contract for construction, and in general, the superintendent with his team authorizes the final payment based on substantial completion and punch list being complete, signed off by the architect and the construction superintendent. So there are a lot of checks before the final payment gets made. So those two things have already been happening, but that's not what our board policy actually said. So during this iteration, there's the authorization of the superintendent to determine the best value for the construction method for any project over fifty thousand dollars, and the two changes to, that align with practice, which is for a change order to be approved by the superintendent or his designee, and the final payment to be approved by the superintendent or his designee. All these things are allowable within law. Just as one little other tidbit, this policy has been, been reviewed by, slow down, reviewed by Tasby Legal, which is the Tasby, Texas Association of School Boards, they're legal, they have a legal department that reviewed this policy, and the procurement attorney that we use regularly. So that's where we are. I'm certainly willing to take any questions.
No red flags, other than just lining it up to practice? Lining our policy up to what is actually being practiced on?
In my opinion, there are no red flags. For instance, there are two items on the agenda tonight, two different construction methods are being used for those. One was a competitive bid, where the purchasing department put out specs for a project, the, the community at large, the construction community bid on it. There are three people who responded, it's evaluated, a recommendation's gonna be given to you tonight in just a second. The other one uses cooperatives. So there's job order contracts through cooperatives, which competitively, competitively procure contracts to do work, like HVAC work in this particular case. And we can use several of those contracts to kind of create a market for the best value. So, two different methods to get the best value we can for a project. Dr. Wheat, you're smiling. You good?
It's coming, it's coming. Prior to this change, and the change before, how often has CV Local came before us? Is it every five years, every ten years, or?
So, there, part of the reason why this started, to look at this policy, was because of the ambiguity of our old, original CV Local. There was a practice in the board to always do a competitive sealed proposal, competitive sealed bid, where the bid goes out, and people submit packets, and it's all opened at the same time, and the, the board ranks, the, the purchasing department would rank them. But there was no way to figure out if that's the way we always do it, or if that's the way we do it. So it was ambiguous. And then we got to the point where it was time to consider the press box and the indoor turf facilities, and the others on that list were the warehouse, security entrance, Al I think that's it. But, in that, the, the board authorized the superintendent to use construction manager at risk to build the press box, and the Al Corte, and the indoor turf facilities, and consider the best value for the other projects on the list. Well, that's ambiguous, too, because unless you were at the meeting and you, it's not what's in policy, it's what was at the meeting, it was a motion in a meeting, and it's not our policy. It's, it was a motion at a meeting. So, we really wanted to get a policy we could live with, and policy to follow, which is something you are, I mean, I, I know that's a thing for you. So, I don't think, I don't know if I've answered your question yet, but that's how we got here.
Right. I think the thing that is of concern to me, just in relationship to policies in general, when this board delegates its responsibility over to administration or to the superintendent, that that comes back before the board at a set timeframe, because the board will be changing members like we did tonight. And so I would like those new members to have the opportunity to review and have that option to allow the superintendent to be delegated for that responsibility versus them taking the responsibility.
I understand.
So somewhere within that language, I would truly like to see that that's gonna come back before the board in two years, four years, whatever that timeframe would be.
Okay. I understand your point of view, and generally, from the perspective of Tasby Legal, they don't like checkpoints like that, because the board can review and change policy at any point. But I understand why you're saying it.
Yeah. If it comes back up, that, that, that could set in the shadows for ten years and never be readdressed. And we've seen that in the past.
Right.
Where, where policies, we just don't have people reviewing them. Fortunately, this administration went back and reviewed policies and did a very thorough exam of those, but that has not happened in our past history. So, that's gonna where my perspective is coming from.
Is there a timeline on when this policy needs to be passed?
There is not. There's a CV Local that's been approved by the board that's in place, that Tasby Legal doesn't agree with.
That March one?
The March one. And that's because you can't pre-approve all the construction methods, because the Texas government code says that for each project, the best value must be determined. So you can't just approve them all. You actually have to approve, somebody's gotta approve the best value for the project. In this particular version of CV Local that we're proposing tonight, it delegates that, that, only that part of the beginning to the superintendent. The March policy that's in place now approves them all, kinda like an à la carte menu.
How is this dissimilar to the hiring, that we give, hiring authority we give to the superintendent?
It's the same action.
So we could do that on a regular basis, we'd bring it back before the board every year?
You could consider both these policies at the same exact time. There's already a method to review the hiring authority in October, so they both could be reviewed at the same time.
Could we consider that, and add that language to that, and keep them tandem, tandem then, so that they are sure to get, be brought up at the same time?
I don't wanna speak for Mr. Leeser, but I imagine that the motion could be to approve the policy as presented, adding the
Yeah.
Review of the policy annually in Oc, at the October regular meeting.
That's perfect.
Annually or bi-annually, whatever.
Or bi-annually, whichever.
We could do this one bi-annually, and because we do the, if it's, makes more sense to do bi-annually, it could still hang out for a year, and then, every other year.
Pardon?
Come to the party.
Yeah. The, the review of the hiring authority
Is yearly.
Is annually, because it
Right.
Goes away, if not.
It does.
Might be easier to remember
To tie it to it.
If they're both annual.
Yeah, that's fine.
Happy to do that, if that's what the board chooses. I'm, I'm here to serve. What other questions can I answer?
Would we need to change some language and vote on it later, or?
I think you can basically append what the change you wanna see to the motion tonight. We can approve the policy dependent upon the language being added to make it reviewable each October. And then we would add that language to the policy, make sure it passes Tasby Legal review, and, and then we'd be, we'd be done with CV Local until, until October.
Yeah, that's fine.
The motion says as presented, so can we just say
Yes.
As amended? And then what would that be?
You'd have to state it, much like you were just talking about with regard to as amended, to review the policy annually prior to November first, which would mirror the language in your other policy, in your personnel policy.
Yes.
Could you say that again?
Nope. Of course extra.
As amended?
As amended. You could, the, what you could do is you could amend the policy to state that it will be annually reviewed prior to November first of each year.
Can we just wait and vote on it next month?
You could do that, too.
I would be happy to present it again. You can do it either way.
It's up to y'all.
Is that cleaner?
I don't, I think you accomplished the task either way.
Six, six of one, half a dozen of the other. But whatever y'all feel most comfortable with is.
Yes, I've spoken with a couple of y'all about, I just feel that that's something the board should decide, and not the superintendent, just my personal feelings on that.
But I understand each, each project requires a different type of management, so we can't be there, or they can't, we can't be there to make every one of those decisions.
Well, we can decide, we don't have to be at the project, but whatever method is considered the best value is, I think, a board decision, and I feel more comfortable that than the superintendent deciding that and recommending that. Of course, we could still, he can recommend it, and we can vote it down, but I just like the board deciding it to begin with, but. That's just me, though.
What is Tasby Legal's reason for not wanting that way? Or is that not the issue?
Drawing upon experience from our last, just finishing up a bond.
The, Tasby Legal doesn't have any qualms about the designation of the authority to choose the best construction method for each project. They had qualms with the board approving all the construction methods, instead of choosing the right one for each project, which is what the government code says.
So the way, the way, the way it was, was basically the board approves this list, instead of this one for this project, this one for that project? Okay.
Correct.
So Tasby Legal wouldn't have a problem with Rodney's suggestion, provided the board...
I think, I think there are versions of local policy that keep the decision about what construction method to use for each project in the board's authority is, is also a possibility. For instance, with the Hartford HVAC project, instead of bringing proposals for what to do, so we can start and get the HVAC done now, like in the next four weeks, I'd be standing with you tonight, asking you to choose a procurement method, and then, in July, or having a special-called meeting to actually approve the project. For the Jefferson project, we did a, we did a bid that takes advertising, it's, it's a two-month process without the board. So, I would be standing here tonight, asking you to do a bid, and then, two months later, we would get the bids back, and the low bid would still be the low bid, and I'd be recommending to you who to work, who, who won the bid through a competitive bid process. So, the timing is completely different, and whether you value that or not, there are certain projects where the timing is really important, and certain projects where the timing's really not. We certainly wouldn't do any project in the shadows without the board knowing. You've had board notes about these projects from me, all along the way before the actual choice of it, and that's the, that's the cadence we would continue to follow.
That's everything under fifty thousand dollars.
That's everything over fifty thousand dollars. Things under fifty thousand dollars are generally budgeted, we don't even deal with construction method.
How many times a year do these type decisions have to be made?
So, it's pretty minimal, especially now that the big projects are closing, or closed. Let's call them closed. They're, so these two projects are an HVAC, a big HVAC, they're two twenty-ton units, and the other is a paving project for the Technology Support Center at Jefferson. Those kinds of things, we just generally can't afford during the regular cadence of operation. So they're either already budgeted, and you approve them as part of the budget process, or I'd, I'd say less than five or six times a year, because we have job order contracts, which is another way to get stuff done. Job order contracts are approved from the, approved by the board regularly, for like fencing, or paving, things like that.
I would like to return to the fact that we manage, we don't manage the district, we oversee the superintendent who manages the district. So, that's a little bit dipping into the management of district operations. If we get into that, approving and delegating what type of contract management is on every single project, that's my opinion.
I just wanna make sure what we do passes the smell test to the public. That's where I'm coming from. So, I don't know that, I mean, there's other districts, I would imagine, that the board does pick those methods and looks at the best value also, but.
Is that true, if they're using Tasby's policy recommendations?
Yeah, since this is a local policy, I couldn't tell you what the split is across the state, but generally, local policies have an A version, and a B version, and an X version, and in Tasby language, the X version is a customized version for each district. I imagine this policy runs the gamut.
I can tell you from history that it does.
It does what?
Run the gamut.
It's not my board policy, though.
Right. And you guys know, I'm, I'm coming in, this is what, my second regular board meeting, so this is something you guys have been talking about. Clearly, what you have before you is an administrative recommendation to change these, to, to, you know, get us in compliance with Tasby Legal's recommendations. At the same time, if the board's not comfortable with it, we can bring it back to another meeting, we can bring back, you know, different options that either, you know, put this in, in my bailiwick, or put it in your bailiwick. I don't personally come in here with a huge opinion on this matter. If, the only, the only thought I have, as we think about it, I don't, I don't need to have the approval, you know, power, or whatever, and I don't mind you guys having it, but I also don't mind you delegating it to me, and me handling it either way. I think it's gonna get done for the best value for the district, because I think we're all on the same team, and we all care about being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. But having said that... Uh, but having said that, uh, as, as Joe just said, ultimately the policy that this board is comfortable with is the policy that needs to be adopted. If we're not ready to vote tonight, that's perfectly okay. Uh, we can vote next month or we, or we can vote tonight. Um, you guys ultimately have to, have to kind of decide where you feel the most comfortable. What I'm hearing is that it might be more convenient, um, to have, to have me do it because I don't have to call a board meeting for me to take action. You guys have to call a board meeting for you to take action. When you take away the convenience factor, to me it's six of one, half a dozen of the other, whether I approve it or whether you guys approve it, um, I think it'll be fine. Um, so you have to weigh as a board, do you want to emphasize the, the convenience of me being able to move more quickly and get things done? Or knowing that the big jobs are mostly behind us and this won't be, there won't be a hundred of these this year. Um, if you guys would prefer to maintain that authority over that specific issue, you're not going to be stepping on my toes is what I'm trying to say. I'm, I'm easygoing on, on this issue and every issue I can be easygoing on. Uh, so I think there are policies, there's policy language that will leave it with you guys and Tasby Legal would be happy with, or there's policy language that gives me the authority that Tasby Legal would be, uh, comfortable with as well. So it's really, really up to y'all.
In hearing that, move to approve update of board policy CV local with, uh, amendment, uh, for annual review, uh, prior to November 1st.
I second.
Okay. Let me catch up. We have a motion by Danny Wheat and a second by Blair Schrader. We will now take a roll call vote. Blair Schrader?
Aye.
Cindy Earls?
Yes.
Taylor Tidmore?
Yes.
Rodney Goodman?
No.
Bill Enricus?
Yes.
Angie Wiley, yes. Danny Wheat?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. We'll now move to item B HVAC replacement at Hartford. Dr. Joseph Waldron is already in place.
Yes ma'am, Ms. President Wiley. Thank you very much. This, um, has to do with the annex. The annex is right here at the Hartford Learning Center, our professional learning center. Uh, the district made a significant investment in Hartford to become a professional learning center for the district and I can tell you it has been a very positive thing. I've experienced it myself. Many, many have experienced it. A new teacher orientation's held there and multiple events this summer and throughout the year. The facility is an old school, um, or let me say a formerly operating elementary school. Let's not call it old. That's not very nice. The gymnasium that those orange arrows are report, are pointing to was intended to be used light duty for students during activity as an elementary gym. So when you get into July and August and you put 150 human beings in there all day, the, the 20-year-old HVAC units that those arrows are pointing to are actually not capable of keeping the room comfortable. So we have enlisted and in your board packet, you have several documents. We enlisted a third-party engineer and, um, used the TIPS job order contract with a local, we actually, there is a little bit of a story here that I should tell you. We had two job order contracts to review. Uh, those two job order contracts at the time on which they were, um, quoted were just for the equipment and the two contracts were $30,000 apart. So we continued forward with the engineer and the lower of the two bids, which is actually a local company right here in Abilene. And, um, the engineer recommended that if we put the new units in and the same duct work, you wouldn't be able to hear anything when the units were running because the, the, the tonnage is going to increase in order to accommodate the space. So the, the engineer recommended and, um, with the recommendation before you tonight will be to increase the duct work with duct socks. There are these cloth things that'll hang from the rafters, um, and air will come out of them and it'll be nice and quiet. So the ducts that are on the walls of this Hartford annex are going to be demoed out and new duct socks is what they're called. S O C K S, socks are going to be hanging from the ceiling, two of them. So the proposal is through a competitive procurement method called a job order contract with the TIPS cooperative. And the, the recommendation is to accept the quote from Batcher, um, and to begin the work. What questions can I answer for you?
What, what is the total cost on the total?
$109,000. I know. It's a lot of money.
For a pair of socks.
For a pair of socks.
And duck socks.
Oh wow.
Cause I almost got naked. I'm just saying.
Well, we vote quickly.
Diminishing.
We've, we've used it, uh, quite a bit since, just in the short time I've been here, what, two months now? Um, and it does get warm. It does get warm. Because we put, the most recent meeting we had out there was all the assistant principals, all the principals and several people from up here. Um, we set them at tables and it, it fills the space up. There's a stage. It's, that is a great facility that you guys have. Uh, we have breakout rooms, the old classrooms or breakout session rooms. Um, and that's what we did with the principals and assistant principals. There were, uh, sessions on a variety of different topics. Um, so we could have a big session in the gym and then we could break out of these classrooms. So, um, I think in my opinion, we've talked about this in the short time I've been here, AISD has made a commitment, uh, to Hartford to be our professional learning center for the time foreseeable future, right? Um, so I, I do, uh, agree that, uh, new air conditioning in that gym would, would be necessary for us to continue to use it the way we want to.
From my own education, how are these unexpected expenses budgeted for?
So, um, there is a capital expense budget in the maintenance department for contingencies just like this annually. Um, about 70% of the cost of this will come from that. And the other will come from reserve funds from the district-wide budget, I imagine. But Jennifer Hines is behind me wiggling. I can tell. But generally if something's not budgeted for it, sometimes at this point in the budget cycle, because we're close to the end, there may be some money to be found. Otherwise the district has a savings account called a fund balance that could be accessed, but generally, generally is not necessary.
What's the anticipated life of the units that are now, that are, that we're talking about putting in? You said the others lasted about 20 years?
Yep. Yes ma'am. So I'm sorry with the yep. So yes ma'am, the
That's okay.
The life expectancy for an HVAC unit is generally 15 years. Uh, and everybody starts getting nervous about maintaining it after that. Its efficiency and the ability to keep it running efficiently goes downhill. So it's made it past its life and so have most of the other HVAC units at Hartford. They're 17 or 18 years old across the facility. It wasn't addressed in this Snyder Electric, the, this facility was not addressed in this Snyder Electric project, project.
So will we be taking this into account in knowing that this is going, since we're using Hartford so well? It not, this will be known to be coming up?
It will be planned for, to the best of our ability.
The rest of the classrooms or rest of the wings or whatever.
And apparently it will not be able to be used about half of the year without being replaced, right?
This annex?
No, no, the gym.
The, which is, yes. Um, we're, we're on borrowed time. Let's just put it that way.
Right. Right. But, but it's about to come to the point where we can't use it if we don't fix it.
Correct with this time of year. Yes.
Not, not in professional, not in professional meetings.
And not if we're going to believe the lawyer. No.
Yeah. Wow, we went back. We went back.
Sounds like to me we need to do that.
Anything else to be? Is there a motion regarding HVAC replacement at Hartford?
I move to accept the quote from, quote from Batcher Service and authorized administration. I move to include to negotiate a contract with Batcher Service to proceed with the removal of the existing units and installation of two new packaged HVAC units for Hartford Learning Center Gymnasium per the inter-local purchasing system. Comprehensive HVAC job order contract 22010602.
I second. We'll now take a roll call vote. Taylor Tidmore?
Yes.
Danny Wheat?
Yes.
Blair Schrader?
Yes.
Angie Wiley, yes. Cindy Earls?
Yes.
Rodney Goodman?
Yes.
Bill Enricus?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Almost done.
Okay.
Dr. Waldron show.
We will now move to item C parking lot improvements at Jefferson Technology Season, uh, Center. Joe Waldron, take over this information giving session.
Yes ma'am, I shall. Um, Jefferson is a former operating middle school. If I remember that correctly. It also functioned a few other things in between. Today it serves as our technology support center for technology support services. There are, uh, the team of people who get things done in technology live here now. The gymnastics gym is at this facility. Uh, it's possible that a, a, an other portions of the building can be used for other things. But right now, um, in order for technology services to do what they do, there is a proposal before you to increase, uh, the paving and, uh, access to the building. What you see in gray is what's proposed to be added and mostly it's asphalt, concrete and sidewalks. It allows for the buildings to be used as it's occupied. I will tell you that, um, during the budget process last year, Carrie Owens, our chief technology officer, set aside money because she knew this project needed to happen. We did get the project bid this spring. We had three respondents. That's all in your board packet. And we recommend tonight the lowest bid to accept the ranking of the bidders and to authorize us to enter in a contract. For the Jefferson parking improvements with the highest ranked bidder. Banky Brothers Construction.
Highest ranked bidder.
They were the lowest cost with the highest ranking bidder. That's confusing.
Can you talk a little bit about the reason the paving is necessary with loading and unloading?
The gray? Tell me again what's being paved.
So the orange, I circled the orange because those are the buildings.
Okay. Okay.
If you focus on the right side of the picture, at the bottom is the orange box on the next slide at the bottom. And the brown looking part of the U that's on the right, that's the orange box at the top of the picture right here. Does that make sense?
So this is the bottom right corner of the previous picture?
Correct. So the drive will go between the, the building at the bottom right, the box that is a gym, that is a gym and locker rooms. And then the part of the U on the right-hand side is where all the technology support services people are. So it creates parking inside the U and access in between so that things can be delivered. Um, ramps to get into the doors and I might actually, if you're all right with it, have Carrie come up and talk a little bit more specifically about why? If that's all right with you.
Gymnastics uses the gym on the left side there?
On the left. It has the brown in the middle and the, yep. So I'll, I don't have, I don't think it has a laser. It does have a laser pointer, but I don't think it works very good. Go.
All right. So you'll see the net street over on the right-hand side. Um, currently the only parking at Jefferson is on the street all the way around the building. We have 19 district vehicles that we, that we use across the district and parking them on the street, they become very vulnerable for damage. And, um, the interior of the building is already fenced in and there's cameras there. So we can better monitor those vehicles and they stay safer and save us money by staying protected. That, and also on the bottom side, you'll see a drive that goes up to the gym that allows 18-wheelers to come up and pick up all of our recyclables. And otherwise we're hauling them out to the street, lifting them up, put them in like 18-wheelers and it's a mess. So that allows for that as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie.
Well, that's also a time they need to be working on little things.
Yeah, it's going to create a heightened level of efficiency at this facility.
Okay, you have finished. All right. Is there a motion, any more questions that you have for Joe? Any more discussion?
Little gymnastics, students and coaches get to park in that? Are they going to park on the street on the gym side?
They, they generally park on the gym side because it's, that's where the door is. It's much easier access for them.
Are we ready?
Cindy's hovering something.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get it. Where's, where's the day nursery?
The day nursery is on the left of this picture, across the street.
Okay, yeah. What's that little building in the middle? Will it have to be taken out? What is it used for anyway?
I have no idea what that building is. Air conditioning.
Air conditioning?
That makes sense. Engineer.
Oh, good. Well, I mean, can it be, can it be moved successfully?
I'm not sure it's coming out. Can you go back to the other picture?
Yeah, we almost need to put those pictures, one on top of the other one.
It's not. It's, the parking lot doesn't go that far.
Be to the side of it.
Did I answer that correctly?
Yeah, at, at present time, uh, the chill water system with, with, uh, that or cooling towers, stuff like that, that is going to be addressed later on. Right now, that system is on its last leg and, uh, their targets are probably what have been done different to keep that building.
So for purposes to here, the, the chiller system is on its last leg and it's going to be a part of a future consideration.
Chiller system for the whole unit or just for the gym?
It's for 80% of the building.
Yeah, it's basically just a shank of the building.
The gym has rooftop units.
That's pretty critical for the, for the technology that's in there that we have that cooled.
It is. That's why we are exploring options.
Thank you.
They're all very expensive.
To be continued.
Yes.
Is, is there a motion regarding the parking lot improvements at Jefferson Technology Center?
So moved.
We have a motion by Rodney Goodman.
Second.
Second by Blair Schrader. We'll now take a roll call vote. Blair Schrader?
Yes.
Rodney Goodman?
Yes.
Angie Wiley, yes. Taylor Tidmore?
Yes.
Bill Enricus?
Yes.
Danny Wheat?
Yes.
Cindy Earls?
Yes.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Waldron.
Okay, let's now move to item D Shotwell Annex. Let's, and I will call on Dr. Q.
Thank you, Ms. President. Uh, the board is entitled to consider the naming or renaming of school facilities according to board policy CW local. You've heard a couple of presentations tonight from the public about this, uh, issue. Um, the annex that we're talking about at Shotwell Stadium, uh, doesn't currently have an official name outside of, we call it the name outside of, we call it the Shotwell Annex, but it is our track, it's our school district track. And I will take, gladly take any questions you may have about this, this item, consideration.
What would the official name be?
I'm sorry?
What would the official name be?
Uh, I would think it would be John McCabe Track and Field or John McCabe Annex.
Track and Field Annex?
Um, you, so you guys can decide that right now. We, at my previous school district, we named our track and field complex after a well-known, beloved track coach, Jackie Harvey, and we called it the Jackie Harvey Athletic Complex. That's what we named it there. So I think you guys have some creative license tonight.
Well, that is more than track and field because it's JV, soccer, football.
So athletic complex would be more inclusive of the other events that take place out there. So the John McCabe, we can add the middle initial, I'm not sure if that's, you know, if that's in the stuff you've been looking at, Eric. Coach John McCabe Athletic Complex. That sounds very, very nice.
I had Coach McCabe and I can tell you that being an Eagle, and it's always a great day to be an Eagle, one of the signs that he had up, and so to me, I think it's only appropriate that we would name it in his honor. So I move that the board consider naming the Shotwell Annex after Coach John McCabe and be named Coach John McCabe Athletic Complex.
I think we have a process in place to name facilities and I think we need to give opportunities to the rest of the community instead of just taking one name. And it may wind up, it would be John at the end, but without giving everyone an opportunity to submit a name, I think we're doing our process an injustice.
It's how, you mean as in the steps we took to rename the, um, elementaries?
Yes, you know, we gave everyone an opportunity to submit a name and then we, they would have named down and presented us with the name that was the most prevalent. And I think that we need to do the same process for this and I'm, I'm sure that probably John's name would be at the very top, but I think our community would be a little upset not given an opportunity to submit the person that they named. And that's, that's not taking anything away from John, I'm just saying the process itself.
I would draw everyone's attention to the board policy that I've included in your board book, CW Local, and you can read that for the recommendation process towards the bottom of that, that policy. Read that and make sure we're following the, the process that board policy lays out. There is some discretion in there for the board. The board may consider input from various sources when considering names for facility. If the board wants to, at the direction of the board, the superintendent may appoint a committee to solicit and review recommendations of names and then it talks about what that committee should be comprised of. And if you do choose a committee, the committee will submit to the board within a timeframe established by the board, three recommended names for the campus or facility to be named. However, the very last line, the board retains the final authority for the decision in naming or renaming facilities. So to Mr. Enrique's suggestion, that is perfectly allowable under our policy and would, you know, potentially slow the process down, but as noted, it, it could still end up with the name that, that has been supported here tonight. But the board does have the authority to move to rename the stadium right now, so it's really going to be what the board deems your desire.
Any other discussion?
There is a motion on the table, just to remind everyone.
So Mr. Enriquez, are you, are you asking us to table this? Is that your, is that a motion to table this to a future meeting so that we can have further discussion or what?
Yes, sir, that's, that's correct. Table it for, for further discussion and then move forward after that, yes.
Let's use the word postpone to a future meeting, table, we bring it back at this meeting. So I know what you mean. I was trying to, thank you, Dr. Enriquez. And a motion to postpone would take precedence over the current motion.
So we have-
You'd vote it first.
So we do, so we, so we have a motion to postpone on the table right now? Yes?
Oh.
I'm making a motion for it.
So I ask for a second. Is there a second for the motion to postpone?
Can I ask a question? What was, how do we get to this point? I mean, how was it named, selected or what was the process of this?
So Derek Hood brought this to the board's attention shortly after I arrived, along with a list of community recommendations, people who had sent in messages of support for this, this endeavor, and then several more emails, letters have come to the school district on, on behalf of this decision to rename the stadium after John McCabe and that's, that's been the extent of it. There, there haven't been any committees or anything like that established up to this point.
But when we did go through the naming process of the elementaries, there was a committee selected to bring us names for each of the schools and then we selected from those names.
Well, the general public submitted names to it. And that, that's a big factor when the general public hasn't had an opportunity to place their person in preference.
So the general public submitted names to the committee and then the committee submitted those to the board, or the top three to the board?
That's correct.
So there's a motion out to postpone the, this, to basically get together a system that we're comfortable with. We have one motion that oversees, oversteps the, just one motion. The motion to postpone is a part-
Is the present.
Takes priority or you would-
Takes priority.
So can we, in a postponing it, can we decide to set up a committee tonight through the agenda item?
We will.
And I would direct the superintendent as a board to, to set up that committee. You don't have to vote on that. That's a policy that you already have in place.
I'd be comfortable with that. We have a motion in need of a second, if anybody wants to make a second. Mr. Enriquez's motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, you've got that new motion.
I've already made the motion, it's just a motion.
Right, she's gonna write it. Yes.
But it's just a motion to postpone.
Rodney, did you second it?
Yes, can I ask a question also? Can we set up a timeline in doing that to get the ball rolling?
That'll just be in the directive afterwards?
Yeah, I think that what you do after the motion to postpone, whether it passes or fails, assume it passes, then just a quick discussion on what the board would like to see going forward.
Okay.
Would be really instructive for the superintendent.
All right. We have a motion by Bill Enriquez to postpone the motion to rename the Shotwell Annex. We'll now take a roll call vote. Cindy Earls?
Yes.
Danny Wheat?
Yes.
Bill Enriquez?
Yes.
Rodney Goodman?
Yes.
Angie Wiley, yes. Taylor Tedmore?
Yes.
Bill, Blair Schrader?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
So let's have that discussion about what you guys would like to see. Let me read the policy one more time to you, just so we're all on the same page. At the direction of the board, the superintendent may appoint a committee to solicit and review recommendations of names. A naming committee may include employee representatives from existing campuses as well as community residents who are not employees. The committee shall submit to the board within a timeframe established by the board, three recommended names for the campus or facility to be named.
Can we move fast enough to come up with a new name by the beginning of school year?
Absolutely. I mean, I can, I can put the committee together, we can have three names for you by the next regular meeting. If that's, or by August, if you want to give me a little bit more breathing room, August might be better.
Can we look at, to me, when you use the term complex, I think that takes away from Shotwell.
I do too.
And so I would look for some other term maybe that we can utilize there and maybe talk with athletic director and have that conversation and see if we can come up with something that doesn't take away from Shotwell itself.
Absolutely.
It's still an annex.
Athletic Annex.
That's a good idea.
So how are you, how are you going to, how are you going to come up with the names?
The names for the committee or the names?
Yes.
I'm gonna have a conversation with Coach Garfield. Well, I'm gonna ask him to be on the committee, that's gonna be the start of the conversation, and then I'm asking for some names of some folks in the community, employees and, and at least one non-employee that, that are engaged in specifically awards that utilize that facility. And we together will put together a committee and put together a timeline of meetings, get together and gather suggestions from the community and then, and then bring the top three to you guys.
Okay. Billy, is that what you had in mind?
Yes.
Or opening it up?
But we need to advertise it.
Yes, to get, yeah, to get broad participation from the community.
Yeah, that's what I have.
Yeah, we'll absolutely advertise it via social media, school website and other things the communications department suggests.
North and south side.
Do what?
North and south side.
North and south side, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. But doing that by August might be kind of fast, you think?
Um, I think it would be best that we get it done before the school year starts and so, I'm sorry?
For us to vote on in August?
I think we can, I think we can get it done by August. I think we can get it done by August.
We can sure try.
Yeah, well, I mean, that gives us the, the whole month, the rest of June, the whole month of July and the beginning of August before our meeting, to get it all done. I think I've got a clear handle on the direction on this. Thank you, board.
Any other announcements from the board or Dr. Q?
I don't have any other announcements. I want to say welcome to our new board members. I know that's been said a few times, but I haven't said it personally, so I'd like to welcome you guys to the board. Thank you for your willingness to serve the community of Abilene and the children of Abilene ISD. And I want to say welcome to our new president, Ms. Angie Wiley. I look forward to working with you. I want to thank you for your leadership in this meeting tonight and I look forward to all the next meetings with you in that seat.
Me as well, I as well. All right, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. It is seven fifty-nine.